That woke us up.
Scare us, huh?
Sorry.
Gentleman.
We start the new year at the big bang. I've got Scott, I've got Scott yelling in my ear and I've got Wesley being like, you ready?
Wesley goes, the national championship is off tonight.
That's exactly right. We're gonna get everybody out here.
Meeting adjourned.
On all the money they're fixing to lose tonight on this national championship. All right. Everybody in the audience, welcome. Uh, this is our first, uh, city council meeting of 2024. Exciting to be in, in this position. Katie, if you would, establish us by calling role.
Councillor Oof.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Roden.
Here.
Mytheller. Alexson. Ellis.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Lacy.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum mayor.
All right. Uh, invitation today is gonna be led by Councillor Scott Thomas and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councillor Guy Robben.
Father, we're thankful for the beginning of a new year and our community, Father, and we thankful for all that you've done for our community and for Madison County, Lord. We pray, Lord, um, that through our business this evening that you just, uh, God, despite your wisdom, just, uh, especially tonight, give us safety of travel as we go home. We pray for this through Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Uh, approval of agenda, uh, councillors may add or delete any items at this time. They need a motion on that to approve as submitted or amended.
Will we approve the agenda as submitted?
Okay, we got a first by Scott and a second by Leslie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Huh? No, Leslie. Geez, she beat you to it, buddy.
Okay.
I am quick.
Liv, she's on, she's in retirement mode. She's ready for that.
Must be nice.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, the motion carries. Introduction of special guests. It's good to see our Roush Coleman, uh, subdivision guys out there. We've got some news for you all here in just a, a bit. So glad that you all showed up today. Um, we have no special order of business, um, and approval of the minutes for meeting December the 11th of 2023.
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
All right, you got a motion?
Second.
Second by Steve. Not cooking up. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. All right, public comments. Anybody out there in the audience, anybody here need to make a public comment at this point in time? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and get right into our city department report. Uh, Chief Thomas, let's go ahead and start with you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, you've got my submitted report. Obviously, the numbers are all up from last year. Um, and, you know, even in the positive, that the, uh, aggressive, I say aggressive, the, uh, active columns. Uh, so, yeah, I really don't have a whole lot to go into. Everything seems to be running as smooth as it can. We've got one officer that's, uh, beginning the academy, Billbury. He starts this month and he will be finishing up, obviously, after 13 weeks, get him out on the street. He's finished his FTO, so he is out working with other officers, but he is out by himself right now, so he's doing a really good job. Uh, SRO program's going really well and, um, and that's about it. We did, all the cameras are finally working, no problems with any of that stuff. I've been asked several times about the new radio systems. All of ours, uh, are in the basement waiting to be installed. Um, we're just waiting on two mobiles, one for the fire department and one for OEM, and then, and that's it. So, yeah, everything else is good.
Good deal. All right, Scott, on to you. What do you got?
Basically, keeping the streets clean right now as when, when possible and as possible and, and waiting to start patching holes as soon as we get finished with the rest of the Christmas and get a little bit of softball stuff situated to get started, hopefully, maybe end of this month and then, uh, working on the fields and that stuff. Other than that, just keep the roads cleared and patching holes.
And good job taking the bull by the horns on, uh, on visiting with the school district and the, uh, the booster club up there to see exactly what we can and cannot do. So fantastic job on that. All right, uh, Sean has got the, and Mr. Oof is at his place today, but Sean has got the flu. He called earlier today, so he's not gonna be with us. Uh, you got anything for us, Bill?
No, just basically, we're still working on the tire, kinda get the electric down on that and some options are gonna be coming in the whole week of January. It'll be a good move as far as that goes. And then, on the wastewater side, we've got the Seaboard every year is off Thursday.
Good deal.
I'm sure Sean will have a whole lot more than that.
No, he usually doesn't say anything, so kudos to you. Silence is a virtue. No, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Uh, all right, Chief Shin.
Uh, just a couple things. I've been assured that the, our KME is in production. They have not supplied me yet with the VIN number, which is one thing we're curious to get, but assured me it is in production and we're still looking at having it here by April, so we'll see. Did have, we had a call the other night, got called in as a lift assist. We got there and walked in and the man was not breathing, went into CPR. Uh, were able to get him back, get him, get a pulse established. Uh, Officer, Chief Thomas, a couple of his officers were there, were great assistants to us. I'm thankful for them. Lieutenant Delory for our department rode in with the ambulance over there, but, uh, that was, it was a surprise, but at least we got him to the hospital breathing on his own. We're currently working with Dr. Embry, uh, Greg Wheeler, Chief Thomas, I've talked about a little bit on developing a mass casualty instant plan. What would happen if we had significant numbers of, uh, injured individuals, you know, with the ambulance, once the ambulance picks them up and goes, what would we do here? And so, talking with Doc Embry about how we would mobilize, what's, what's way to mobilize the Boston Mountain Medical Care people, the Mass Medical Group, the R care folks, whatever. Uh, how, how would we handle such a situation? But it's not something we could just jump up and do, or even incorporate in the school nurses perhaps in turn. So, we're, we're working on developing that. Uh, Chief Thomas and I are gonna visit with, uh, try to set up a time the next week or two with the school superintendent to talk about this and some other things. We've been dealing with, with school emergency plans, trying to get that up and, and running as well. Uh, other than that, I had a conversation with the mayor the other day that, that did remind me of the, the moving to the class three ISO rating, making sure everybody understands how that occurred and that didn't just occur, you know, out of the goodness of the insurance companies' hearts and, and those kind of things. So, we're gonna work on trying to do a little bit better job making sure everybody understands that the improvements that we have made within the city, both with water and with fire department have led to that. And as you can see in my written report, one of the things we're gonna try to work on this coming year is try and move us toward that, that next rating, try to get up there. But we're within, we're within striking distance and I think some of the things we're getting ready to do this coming year, uh, especially with the upgrades and training, some other things happening, we should be in good shape to try to make that happen.
Chief, explain to the council or refresh their mem, refresh them on this. Uh, where are we at on, on, I mean, percentage wise? ISO rating of three versus five where we were at, increasing it by two steps? Where are we at percentage wise?
That puts us in the top 14% in the nation.
Uh huh. And then two would put us in the top?
Top one.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, when we start working with our economic development folks and start trying to, to encourage people to come to live with us and work here and spend their tax dollars here, that's a, that's a good selling point, is to share where you are as far as insurance rates. I think you had told us before about the, what you saw when you moved in from outside the city into the city before we even went to class.
You know, there's been so many increases in ever, everyone's insurance, it's not just my insurance, it's everybody in this room's insurance has went up significantly because, I mean, it's just been a rough year for insurance companies, a lot of natural disaster and things of that nature. But what is impressive to me is we did not feel hardly any of that here, even though our rates increased, we were offset significantly by that fire rating from ISO five to ISO three, which basically held our insurance rates pretty much stationary for, for what they were. I mean, they might have went up a little bit here and there, but that's a huge, huge, huge benefit and I can't wait to see what it's gonna do if we get to that ISO rating of two.
And that's, you see in that report, there's the, the three areas that we have the, the most potential for growth in there, which company personnel training, community risk reduction, those are things, especially the training, because that's one of the things we've talked about is, uh, the ISO, they don't care if you're a volunteer department or a career department, what they wanna know is how much training do your people get? And so, we make a really good effort at trying to get our folks trained. Of course, I, I see our assistant chief out there who's our training officer, does a heck of a job with the training, uh, also sending folks off to different kind of trainings around, around the state and around the country. And so, that has become one of our hallmarks as to what we do and what we really push for with fire department is train. And I'm, I'm really proud of both what our training officers do and what our firefighters do, and I think we see the, the benefits of it, because that was one of the periods of growth this last time and it's something we're gonna target again this coming, this coming rate of approval.
Fantastic.
Seems like that'd be something nice to put on the city page, so people understand that they.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that the mayor was talking about. I'm thinking that's something we're gonna try to figure out how to, how to frame that best.
We gotta, we gotta do better. I mean, I get it. Everybody here's, everybody works around here is humble. Everybody in here is humble, but we've gotta do a lot better at singing our own praises sometimes. And I, and part of that is, is the education aspect of it, putting it on the website, like you say, Leslie, that's probably a really good idea. Right there is the man that can help us out with the Madison County Record, Kevin. You can go over there and threaten him to whatever you need to do. He's a pretty good guy, but he, but.
One of the things my father taught me a long time ago is don't pick a fight with somebody who buys ink by the barrel. That's a, is a, is a smart.
But they have been, uh, the, the record's been fantastic and, and like I say, uh, our social media, uh, outlets, uh, and there's a lot of things that we have failed to do that we, we will work on in '24, but I think that's a good point, Leslie, so.
Any, any questions, anything I can answer for anybody?
All right, Katie?
I am finishing up all the hearing things. I think we, revenue was really good. It looks at 41% over what we had budgeted, so that's a, it's a large, large percentage we, so. Um, I presented a four page, the four departments that will need amendments. I didn't wanna do it this month because the last two years we've had some late stragglers that came in, um, some late bills that were from '23. So, any amendments, I, I wanted to make sure we were, had everything paid before we do an amendment. So, next month I plan to make these amendments, but I wanted y'all to have them and you could look at them and ask any questions that you might have.
And guys, I don't have to remind you all, y'all took those roads with us. We spent a lot of money last year. I mean, we spent a lot of money. We put the taxpayer dollar back to work for the taxpayer, which is fantastic, and, and we're blessed in the fact that we've got 41%, or 40%, did you say, Katie, or 41?
Forty-one.
Forty-one percent over, uh, what we've budgeted for, so that is phenomenal. Means our economy here in Huntsville is very strong and that's a good thing, so, um. Is that all you've got, Katie?
It is, yes.
All right. Brandy, you got anything for us?
Just a quick update, everybody that's on the steering committee. We had talked about rolling out the Economic Development Strategic Plan Survey, um, this week. We have put that off, uh, we're still working to get the questions finalized with everyone and get it translated. So it'll probably be another, uh, week as the mayor's off and doing this fully this week. Just wanted to get that.
Yeah, the survey come, is, is actually, and we'll roll this out to you council members, I'll have Katie share that with you, uh, probably before it hits the general public, I would think. Uh, we, we've already kind of approved everything that's, that's went into it, but I would really implore each, and all you in the audience as well, really implore each of y'all to take this survey. We're not gonna know where we need to stand or what we need to work on for future projects and things of that nature without you taking this survey. So, whenever that thing rolls out, we're gonna hit the ground running with big advertisements that, like I say, the paper's done a really good job. I sat down with Dan back there, uh, last week and they, there was an article in this last week's paper about exactly what we're doing and, and kinda the approach that we're taking. So, uh, I would implore each of y'all to, to take those in your, in your positions or as private citizen. Uh, no feedback is bad. All feedback is a great positive thing. So, we, we, and nothing right or wrong about this survey. You, you, you can respond however you'd like and there's no consequences repercussions. We want you to be open and honest with us in regards to what you expect, so, um, all right, on, on to my part of it. We still have no word on the, uh, grant for the park. We were supposed to find out in mid-December. That's come and went. Luckily, I, I think last week, whenever we were having a meeting with the paper, uh, I had called Chelsea over at, uh, North Arkansas Economic Development. Um, still have no answer on that. They've delayed that for some reason. The Heritage Commission, or, or the Heritage Group, uh, has delayed that, um, somewhat. Uh, so we're expecting fully to find out sometime in, in January, sometime this month. So, whenever I'm hooping and hollering and you can hear me from your respective homes, you'll know that we got it, and if I'm cussing, you'll know that we did not get it, so, anyway. This month we will be advertising, uh, for the position of animal control. Uh, we have, we have utilized, obviously Sean's not here, but we've utilized Sean and Scott, uh, and Chris, uh, to do that on the interim until we kinda facilitated what we needed and, and where we needed to be at. Obviously, we were subpar, so now we're, we're doing a lot better. Uh, we have no dogs. We have no dogs currently. We've written, I was telling, uh, Steve the other day, we've written 200% more citations on loose animals. That sounds like a big number. We've actually written two. So, so we have far exceeded anything that we've ever done last.
Progress.
So, so it's progress. It's progress. But, uh, I have got to get a hold of the, uh, the vet, uh, and we're working, we're finalizing our agreement with them. So we'll have a more ironclad agreement with them as to what we can do and how, and how our new ordinance reads, and I think they were pleased with that, uh, the way the ordinance read. Uh, so we're, we're heading in the right direction with that. So, um, that's gonna be advertised this month. If anybody out there, uh, would be gonna rest in a part-time position, that, that would be a fantastic one. Uh, we'll be gone this week, Tuesday through Friday, to the AML conference, our winter conference down there. I always learn so much. Uh, Jessica's gonna attend that conference. Uh, Katie usually goes, but she's not, not going this year, so, anyway, uh, but, but this is a, a really good conference and we learned a lot, uh, down there, so I'll be, I'll be gone the rest of the week. Uh, which brings up another point, and we're gonna talk about it here in just a minute. I need a volunteer to be the pro temp in my absence.
I would.
I'm gonna second.
I'm gonna make the motion that it must be Scott to vol, we'll volunteer him.
Scott is the democratic way, but everybody loves you that much, so.
We all looked at him.
Yeah, everybody looked at Scott.
They just, we just go straight there naturally.
So Scott, will you accept it?
I'll accept.
All right. Okay, let's go ahead and take it just a voice vote on that. Every, everybody in favor of Scott being the pro temp in my absence, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I like the Mark the Diet stain.
Absolutely. To make it fair, that's for sure. Um. Have, had a little, just an emergency statement, I guess, if you will. Uh, Chief Thomas is already working on it. I think Jennifer's working on it somewhat. Today we had a high straight line winds, obviously. Uh, there's stuff all over my yard right now. I went home for lunch and, and seen it that way, so I mean, this, these were outrageous winds. It blew the roof, the tar paper roof off of our bathroom building, and I think Scott's guys went down and cleaned that up today. And so, we are looking at, uh, Katie's gonna be doing some research on the, we have obviously got insurance on the building. We're gonna be looking at, uh, you know, what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. We may end up having to have, depending on, I thought of this, we may end up having to have a special meeting to make sure that we get this thing done with winter upon us and, and things, you know, the freezing and expansion of that roof. The quicker the better on this thing, so we may end up having to call you down for a special meeting to okay what we're gonna do, either via insurance or if we're paying for it and putting the bill. But I, I look at it as an opportunity because obviously, uh, the tar paper roof might have worked for the last 120 years, but it's not gonna work now. So we are gonna update that hopefully, and the insurance company will hopefully cooperate with us on that, yes.
Uh, just to clarify, it's the, the, about a third of the building, which is this lower, the east side of the building, which will be probably the conference room with this large bay. And the construction, how it was built back then, and which was perfectly normal, was a very, very heavy felt tar paper, uh, and then an overlay, a sealer over that. And it was layered, you know, like you would have shingle basically, and it was very old and dried and had a couple of small leaks in it. Um, and it, it just, the wind just literally ripped it off the building. The, the, all the wood structure is still fine that's in there, but it is obviously leaking. Um, the other portion of the building is, is still okay. It's, it's got the same type of roof on it, so at some point it will be needing to be replaced, but I mean, obviously. Talking of, yes, the one that's been damaged is the one low, on the east side, on this side, that's the, the large garage bay that goes all the way to the back, so.
Scott, did we, did you?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
I never even got a hold of him.
I just seen some trucks over there. I just assumed that.
So that, that's something that, it wouldn't just be a portion of it. We're just gonna take the time to do it, then you would be talking about doing the whole ceiling, right? The whole roof?
Um, that, that.
Obviously, that's something that you're.
So that whole section is separated, uh, by exterior walls. That was an add-on back in the sixties, it looks like. And so, the other portion is not technically connected to the roof itself. It has its own segregated roof, segregated by the exterior wall that goes all the way, all the way up, yes. And then it's layered off with, um, like I said, the paper and then flashing on each.
At some point, the rest of that.
Yes, yes, it will at some point.
And to your point.
Insurance will.
Even though you're saying it's segregated, the insurance companies will typically
Right.
Look at the whole entire structure
Right.
In, in, in its entirety.
Right.
But if they do segregate it, at that point in time, we will have to have a special meeting to converse. And we've already put $55,000 in our new budget for this year to upgrade, to finish upgrading or do the upgrades that we wanted to do. Uh, so we will probably have to have, once Katie gets back with the information from, uh, from the insurance company and how they wanna proceed. If, even if they do segregate it, Chief, I would say that we would have to look at just going ahead and putting, doing it.
Yes.
Doing it all at once and.
It would probably, it would probably the best cost-effective way of doing it. And again, insurance will play a factor in that, and we'll be getting several bids later this week and next week, so we'll get back to you.
So have we got any leaks at all in the other side?
One, very small leak in the front. It's very small in the, in the front, and it's, it's been there for as long as I've known, so we've, we've worked on it, but it's, again, it, it, the material has lived its life on the roof, so, and then some, so. Any questions?
Okay. Uh, lastly, I've, and I, I bring this up with great joy and anticipation, actually. Uh, if, and I'm, I'll try to jog y'all's memory about this. You know, months ago, we had visited in regards to, back in the, actually, early, late spring, early summer, we'd visited and, and had a couple, because of the POA that's here, we'd had a couple of meetings with Roush Coleman and some of the effective things that had happened over there in that subdivision. And one of the things that they had brought to our attention, I think Steve and I had met with them the, the first go around was, hey, we think it's gonna cost about $65,000 to do all the upgrades and get it where it needs to be in regards to, um, the building, it's, or I'm sorry, the, uh, the whole entire subdivision, the infrastructure, uh, i.e. manholes, curb and guttering, sidewalks, things like that. So we had that first initial meeting and, and to be quite honest with you, I was a bit taken back because they said it was gonna cost them $65,000 to fix all that. And then they offered us just a payout of 35, offered the city of Huntsville a payout of $35,000 at that point in time. Well, uh, Jessica and I had, had, uh, sent back another letter to them, a certified letter saying, hey, look, we're getting toward the end of the year. We need to know kind of where y'all are at. We have figured out with our local vendors that we can probably get the thing done for $51,000. We really don't want to be the ones doing the labor and the work, but you can get by with instead of $65,000, $51,000, so we kinda entered that negotiation. Well, shockingly enough, last Thursday I received this email and I, and I'll, Dan, I'll, I'll be happy to share this email in its entirety with you. I can forward it to you or whatever. But, um, Jesse, uh, Fulcher, who, uh, is the director of land acquisitions and planning for them, had said in this letter or this email to me that, um, what they would like to offer is cutting a check to the city of Huntsville in the amount of $65,000 and just be done with it. Now, there's some reservation in this to remind you all and jog y'all's memory about this. There was some hesitation reservation that, that Steve and I had that, look, we are not the ones that created this problem, so what does that look like? Well, after going through this and just briefly talking to our attorney about it, one of the things that they say is, is, hey, uh, we are extremely hesitant to work on existing city-owned infrastructure and on property that is owned by the POA. That's what their lawyers are telling them. Well, with all, all in and everything that we've been asked, or what we've asked of them, you know, technically by law, they wouldn't have to necessarily even do this, to be honest with you. We'd already signed off on the last living permit when they left town. This is them putting their best foot forward, and I'm gonna make the suggestion that we accept this in its entirety at $65,000. We can work, I'll work with Scott to figure out the contractors that we can use to, to get the things done that we wanna get done, and we'll utilize this $65,000 on, on doing that project. So, uh, that would be my suggestion, and I'm open for any type of discussion or anything that you all want to, uh, talk about right now. Okay, got a motion?
I just had, I just had one question. Does that have anything in there about, that relieves them of any additional?
There will be.
We haven't reached a contract with them.
Yeah, go ahead.
I said, we haven't reached a contract or anything with it.
We haven't contractually obligated ourselves to this, so what I told Jesse is, is I'm gonna bring it before you all. And if that's the, if that's the direction that you want me to, to go with and say, hey, look, for $65,000, we will, we'll, we'll give you your final release and, and we'll not bring it up again, I guess. If that's what you, is that something?
Well, that's probably what they would request, I imagine.
So I was just thinking that might be an issue if there's.
Yeah. Good point.
Then it hasn't been noticed yet.
Good, good point.
That was our original estimated cost anyway with this stuff.
Yes, yes, and look, I get it. I mean, you get down into the cost of it, it's $51,000 that we can get it done for. Really, our contractors don't have the overhead necessarily that Roush Coleman would have, just being a huge conglomerate business like they are. So, that's why we can get it done cheaper. I think that this is the, I, now, we're going record to saying this, I think that this is amicable on, I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that they went to the full extent of the, the $65,000 with us, whenever they didn't have to. And it means that they're trying to work with us, so, uh, and we've worked with them, obviously, too. Uh, and if we do take this offer, and we've got a motion in a second, which we'll vote on here in a minute, I'd actually visited with Steve the other day, and I said, I would walk, walk, me personally and as well as Scott. We will make sure that everything goes through the planning commission, the proper channels. There'll be building permits guy, everything. That way we can show the progress to the citizens that, hey, this is what the $65,000 was spent on. That way, it's completely transparent, nobody knows. I mean, everybody will know at that point in time exactly what's going on over there, so.
Well, as long as it's used for the improvements of the Cedar Bluff.
Hundred percent.
I heard.
Shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah. So we've got a motion, we've got a second. Do we have any more discussion on the table?
One thing I'm finding, so are we relieving them of any issues that come up or just for the issues that brought to, brought to their attention?
So, we'll have to negotiate some of that with the contract, so.
The, the specifics, I've got a file on it, and I'd be happy to share it with you. We've got a file that Steve and I, and I think Guy had went out once, I think maybe Sean had went out once. The, the, uh, Property Owner Association had went out with us and showed us some of these issues. These, now, let me be clear, these are only gonna be those issues that we fix.
That's what I wanted to make sure of.
So, if there are any warranties that go with the homes or driveways or anything of that nature, that's still on Roush Coleman. Now, I think we're far past that from.
We have a five-year structure.
Okay, that's still, they're still gonna have to.
Okay, I just didn't want to take away anything.
No, no, no. This is all infrastructure is the main problem with this.
But since summer, when they first, we haven't heard any, there hasn't been anything yet. I mean, everything's.
No, and no new concerns, and we've stayed in pretty close contact with Jeff back there, uh, and let me tell you, just Johnny on the spot, there's probably over there, I'm probably the first person to know about it, besides his wife. Uh, but, but I mean, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty good about letting us know. Uh, but, but I mean, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty good about letting us know, and I think to remedy, obviously, and Steve, you can help me out, or Guy, or whoever went over there with us. Property Owner Association, guys, if y'all want to get up and come to the mic, that's fine, too. Where we got over there, these are significant things that, that could cause problems later on down the road. These are things that, that's what this sixty-five thousand dollars is gonna be focused toward, is those, those specific things. Like, uh, moving of dirt mounds on, on vacant land, uh, clearing a, a bit of property for some new parking, because obviously, some of the roads over there are a little too steep to drive up.
Wasn't one of them a, uh, concrete sewer?
There were actually two.
There's three.
There's three of them, yeah, three of them. Three concrete culvert. Uh, the biggest thing, in my opinion, is the addition of the sidewalks. Because whenever I drive through there, I mean, there's kids, I mean, back in the summertime, there'd be kids out playing and all that, and, and all of a sudden, it's just where the sidewalk ends. And then it turns off into a little holler there, and somebody's gonna get hurt. So if we can figure out a way to make, to accomplish that, I think that's the most significant thing. And that was the most significant cost is finishing up some of the sidewalk stuff, so.
And some correction of drainage.
And, and correction of drainage, yeah.
Yeah, the drainage is, like I'd say, second concern is down there. Sidewalks now, that one where those three lots are, that we want to eventually turn over to the city for a park. I wouldn't be too concerned with the sidewalks in there, just for the, you know, what we plan on doing with it later. It's just the other spots. But the drainage is, is, you know, the culverts and then those ditches.
Yeah.
They're overgrown, they flood every time it rains.
Well, what we'll do in, in my statement a while ago, I, Scott and I will work hand in hand with the planning commission to make sure that everything is transparent and, and you see what, so what we'll do is we'll include you in on those conversations, the P O A. And, and just so you know, hey, we're gonna hit this, we're gonna do the sidewalks on this day between this time and this time, so y'all can kind of be prepared for it. If you have, if, if you can interject at any point in time or whatever. But we need to really use the sixty-five thousand that they're offering for those things that we have in writing, uh, before, I mean, that we had back in, in early May, I think, so.
Which it was the drainage, the sidewalks, and then those crushed culverts.
Yes.
Pretty much a lot of the other stuff. Um, the water departments come out and correct it, you know, as far as the manholes that were busted.
Yeah.
Uh, the water meters that were above ground, they lowered them, fixed the dirt. We just have that water leak that we've been trying to chase down, but.
Oh, yeah, they're at the entrance, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
They did come out and scrape the ground, and they diverted ninety percent of it off the street, but now it's coming out of the very bottom of the street, like that where going with the highway.
Yeah.
So, Scott.
Colin.
Sean, they're gonna dig the street up wherever you come into the neighborhood and try to look that eight-inch main across there, so.
Good deal. Well, we've got a motion, and we've got a second. So do we, since it's a financial, just, just a voice vote?
Accepting money versus spending money.
Okay.
I don't know, I may be wrong.
If no more discussion is become, anybody got anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we will get with them, Jessica, next week after we get back, and we'll tell them that that's what we'll accept. Fantastic. That's it on the, on the mayor's report. I will give a, uh, statement of the city address in February, like I did last year. That's it. All right. All right, you've been supplied a copy of, uh, the building inspection report and, uh, animal control, oh! Let me back up. I want to formally introduce our new code compliance officer, Mr. Jeremy Shin. Jeremy, stand up, please, so everybody can get a good look at you.
She can make a speech.
He's more than welcome to. Jeremy, you got anything to say?
Uh, I don't think so.
Well, this, this is brand new, and I, I'm, I'm already excited in the fact that, uh, I, we, we were in contact late last week, and, uh, uh, Jeremy's already kind of hit the ground running, uh, went by and checked some of the things that we kind of had on the docket from, uh, Mr. McConnell. He's already cleared six of those properties already. Twelve properties already, okay. Well, you said six, but now twelve.
I, I went out today.
Okay, all right, good deal, good deal. Well, he's hit the ground running, and so we've got just a little bit of training. Uh, did you ever get with Boston Mount Salt Wasteland District?
Have you? No.
Okay. Yeah, and I still haven't got a, a call back from the city of Fayetteville, so we're gonna send him for about three days on training with them. And then he's gonna get his I D. from, uh, Captain Herring. And then, uh, at some point in time, I'd like for him to spend just a few hours with you, so you can talk to him about writing tickets and things of that nature. So, Jeremy, welcome aboard. Obviously, you're already here, but welcome in a more formal capacity, I guess. Thank you for, uh, putting your application in, and we look forward to this, so. All right, thank you, thank you. All right, now on, I apologize. Had you come for no reason, Jeremy.
I thought I was gonna speak out.
Uh, animal control officer, I think you, did, did Sean, was he able to get that in, Katie? Yeah, so you've been supplied a report for that, that. All right, uh, commission and committee, uh, meeting reports were emailed with the agenda packet. Uh, water and sewer commission meeting was held on December the twenty-first, uh, the planning commission meeting, December the eighteenth. Economic development and tourism, um, commission meeting was on June the twenty, and they had no December, what?
Nothing, it just looks funny. They just, the June one was never supplied to council, so I was just running it through.
June twentieth, all right, and no, no December meeting. I got you, yeah, all right, I got you now. All right, unfinished business. Ordinance, uh, city ward redistricting, proposed twenty-twenty-four dash two, needs to be put on its second reading.
Uh, move we put the ordinance on the second reading by title only.
Okay.
For the second reading.
Got a motion, got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Okay.
Jessica, you would?
Uh, we have ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash two, and ordinance redistricting city wards.
Simple enough, wasn't it?
Easy enough.
All right, on to new business. Um, obviously, we've already took care of part of that, but a resolution setting meeting rules, uh, proposed one dash twenty-twenty-four. Need a motion on that resolution? I think you've been supplied that. Let you get to it. Read over it, and I'll entertain a motion or, uh, uh, any questions.
Exact same. I make a motion for the acceptance of resolution one dash twenty-twenty-four.
Have a motion. Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Eyes have it. Okay, we now have a new set of meeting rules, or an old set of meeting rules. Number B, or letter B, on new business, a resolution amending airport land purchase agreement, proposed two dash twenty-twenty-four. We'll get, we'll get down into that here in just a second with the resolution. I'm, I'm gonna give everybody a, a quick update on that. Um, we had, last month, whenever we met, we brought it to you all, the contract in its entirety for, uh, the purchase of the two-point-seven acres and the four-point-two-zero acres. We were approved to do this thing through council at that point in time, so we moved forward with that. I can't really do anything financial until we, until we're okay with that. Well, come, come back, and there were about two or three different items that you can look at there as I'm talking. You can read through what those items were that was brought to our attention on the contract. Some of them just formality-type things that we were, we, that, uh, Mr. Culver had asked us to change. So we changed those and went ahead and got a signed contract. So this resolution is basically, uh, to accept the signed contract the way that it was with, with these changes, so.
Make a motion, accept those.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second from Roger? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Eyes have it. Okay, uh, item C, under due business, an ordinance to establish a bank line of credit, uh, proposed twenty-twenty-four dash one. And the emergency clause is included in this, and there's a reason for that, obviously, you know, time is of the essence. Our contract basically stipulates that we will close this thing out by January thirty-first, or that's the wish of the Culver family. Uh, with that said, we're, we're kind of in crunch time, especially me being gone this week. I don't think it's gonna be any hiccups if we are a week after or whatever. We just have to bring those amendments back to you all and, 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 and change that at our next meeting. But with that said, this is, we're, we're finalizing, uh, we're gonna send this out for bid to all the banks. We're gonna let all the banks, uh, be included in this. There is a, um, there is a tax deferred loan that we could be looking at. I think that each bank participates in, from what I understand, and I'm gonna get clarification from a, a bank that I know very well to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples to make this thing as, as fair as we possibly can, but, uh, there is that. The biggest thing, guys, is, um, and we, we finally got, uh, word from, uh, the Arkansas Municipal League. Katie had been so kind as to reach out to the auditors, auditors, and I'd actually talked to him as well. Said, hey, we think it's a great idea, we just, you know, know that anybody's ever asked the way that we're wanting to approach this. And so then we got the lawyers involved at A M L to make sure that they put the final blessing on it, and they said, love the idea, here's some rules and regulations that you probably want to go by. One of those, the biggest thing is, and, and y'all are probably curious, 'cause I was as well, um, what can a city borrow? What can, what is the magic number? What is that amount? And so by Arkansas State Constitution, a city can borrow up to five percent of the assessed value of properties inside the incorporated city limits. Now, that's, that's a lot to take in there, but it's all assessed values inside the, the incorporated city limits. The principle, that includes personal and real property values. So whenever I got that report, you'll be happy to know that we're moving on up, as they say. In twenty-nineteen, our assessed value inside the incorporated city limits was approximately thirty-five million dollars. That was the, that was in twenty-nineteen. In five short years, our new assessed value inside the incorporated city limits is just shy of a hundred million dollars. That's a sixty-some, sixty-eight point some odd percent increase. Don't hold me to that, Dan, I'll get you the right number if you ask me for it. But it's about sixty-some odd percent increase on that, uh, which is impressive. Means we're growing. Uh, what that means for us as far as our borrowing power is we can borrow a little over three-point-one million dollars at any given time. Now, what we're gonna ask for in this ordinance is we're gonna potentially borrow against the C D. that we have to the tune of about five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. Uh, this is gonna be a blanket line of credit for the city at that point in time, meaning that whatever you as counselors or whatever ideas I bring to council, if we approve those, this could be used for those specific things. Not just the purchase of real estate property, but if we wanted to build a new facility of some kind, or, I'm using examples here. We wanted to build a new facility of some kind, we wanted to update a facility. We now have five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars that we can add to our bottom line without touching one dollar of our general fund, with the exception of the actual payment that's gonna come out of that. What we're gonna do is we're gonna defer the interest at five, Katie, five-point-oh-five?
We have five on the C D.
Okay, blanket five. We're thinking that our financial terms are gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of six to seven percent is what we're hoping for. If that's the case, we're gonna defer the interest that we're getting, simple interest that we're getting on the C D. We're gonna defer that over to the payment, which will net us a, a interest term of about two percent or somewhere right around there. Now, we're gonna weigh our options with this, uh, tax-deferred method, uh, and loan, uh, that they don't really talk a whole lot about, and it's been a long time since someone's done them. But we're gonna at least approach them on those, those two things. So that's, that's our goal, and guys, I think that this is, uh, gonna be a good thing for us. That way, in the past, we've hamstringed ourselves by saying, okay, this is our bottom line, we don't want to go over this, so let's wait and do that project next year with this line of credit, as long as we still have favorable terms. We can do, as a city our size, we can do a whole lot with that money now, so, um, looking forward to doing this. I say all that, now then, we need a motion on the ordinance?
I move we place this ordinance on its first reading.
Okay. Any more discussion, any, any questions of me? That's a lot. It's like taking a break out of a fire hydrant, I know, but. Okay, so we got a motion, we got a second. We, now it's ordinance, so we have to have a roll call.
Well, on.
She'll have to read it.
Oh, sorry, I apologize.
Yeah.
All those, you got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Go ahead.
Ordinance number proposed twenty-twenty-four dash one, an ordinance regarding a line of credit. Whereas the city of Huntsville adopted resolution number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three on December eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, approving the real estate purchase and sale contract between the city of Huntsville and Charles, Charles E. Koger and Lois Jean Koger, trustees of the Koger Revocable Trust, um, under trust dated July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, or two thousand and five, to purchase approximately four-point-two acres located in Huntsville, Arkansas Airport, and two-point-seven acres located on Airport Road, with the estimated closing date to be January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Whereas resolution number eighteen dash twenty-twenty-three was approved for the mayor to enter into a financing agreement with the local bank for purposes of procuring financing, uh, for the real estate purchase. Whereas an ordinance is necessary to approve the using of a line of credit in order to finance the purchase of the real estate and for any future purchases approved by resolution of the city council. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas, Section One, that the city may be allowed to borrow up to five, five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars using the city of Huntsville's certificate of deposit C D., currently held by Ann Stapp, as collateral to establish a line of credit with it being paid off within five years. This line of credit will be used to purchase the approximate, um, four-point-two acres located at Huntsville, Arkansas Airport, and the two-point-seven acres located at Airport Road, per the real estate purchase and sale contract and any amendments, as well as any real or personal assets adopted by resolution by the Huntsville City Council. That the mayor will act as the authorized signor of the financing agreement or other required agreements require, regarding the line of credit with a locally competitive bank. Section three, emergency clause, that the ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, comfort, and convenience preservation, safety, and welfare of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from the state of adoption, passed and approved by the city council of the city of Huntsville, Arkansas, this eighth day of January twenty-twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rule requiring the reading of ordinance to go on three different days, be suspended, the ordinance be placed on its second reading by title only.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number proposed twenty-twenty-four dash one, an ordinance regarding a line of credit.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rule requiring the reading of an ordinance on three different days be further suspended, the ordinance be placed on its third reading by title only.
Second. Motion, got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance number proposed twenty-twenty-four dash one, an ordinance regarding a line of credit.
Open for discussion.
Open for discussion, yes. The other thing I will add to, guys, and, and then you might, I don't know if you're gonna write a whole lot about this, but I want you to make sure that, understand that two-hundred-thousand dollars of this, we will work with, uh, the airport commission. Matter of fact, we've already kind of put them on notice, Charles has anyway, uh, put them on notice that that two-hundred-thousand dollars is gonna be paid back to us from them. Uh, now, we don't know that timeframe, we'll know more once we start getting into the grant start. And I think, Katie, did you, we're gonna submit a grant by February.
By January thirty-one?
By January thirty-one or February, uh, for a five-hundred-thousand-dollar eighty-twenty split.
I think it's a ninety-ten on the hanger.
Okay, ninety-ten on the hanger. They had so many different ones.
They do. They, we can apply for one of each kind per year, so we can apply for a ninety, ninety-ten, which is what we would want our biggest one to be. The next, and eighty-twenty could be our apron and some taxiways.
You bet, yeah. And so far, I, you know, looking at the bids, and Katie kind of had to walk me through that, because it, it's overwhelming on this. But I think right now, we've got a total of five-hundred, roughly five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars on the last bid, and everybody seems to be holding true to that. Uh, local guy here doing the concrete and all that, but just, I want to make, reiterate and make sure that everybody here knows that of this three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that we're gonna expense over the next two years, two-hundred-thousand we're getting back over a period of time from the airport, so. Yes.
I want to thank you for your endeavors, working this financial strategy of this.
Well, you bet.
This, it took a lot of time and effort for this. You know, this is outside the box, even what we've had in the past. I just wanted you to know, I appreciate you going out on this, researching it, getting the answers, and bringing it back to us.
Bet.
Thank you.
Bet. Thank you, Steve, I appreciate that very much.
Now I'll make a motion for the adoption of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one.
Got a motion, got a second? We need a roll.
Roll call now.
Yeah. Katie, if you would?
Counselor Oof?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Evans?
Roden?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
Seven to zero?
All right. We have a, hold on. Go ahead, Scott.
No, I move we, uh, for the acceptance and passage of the emergency clause.
Now a second.
Got a motion, got a second? Roll call, Scott?
Um, no, I think it's just great, I'm, I'm straight worse.
Got to check with the pro team over here. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We have an ordinance. Thank you, guys, and I will, uh, get started on this early next week after I get back from Little Rock. All right. With that, uh, that concludes our new business announcements, correspondence, or comments. Economic Development Commission meeting will be held Tuesday, January the sixteenth at eight-thirty. Water and Sewer Commission meeting, Thursday, January the eighteenth, at four o'clock P M. Planning Commission meeting, Monday, January twenty-second, at six P M. And of course, the city council meeting will be, uh, second Monday, February the twelfth, at six o'clock P M. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make the motion.
Second. We got her.
I missed the, I got the time, but I missed the, who, you did adjourn.